You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that were nice to me. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one hurt around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
Well, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to Monday, August 12th Fayetteville City Council Meeting. We thank you for joining us. We have a full house, so we appreciate you joining us this evening. At this time, item 2.0 is the invocation. We'll ask that all would rise for the invocation. We ask that Oversea Laverne Hayden from the Wesleyan Pentecostal Churches render us our prayer. Also, I ask that you please remain standing after the prayer for the Pledge of Allegiance.
It's a privilege to be here tonight. A pastor to Wesleyan Pentecostal Church on East Mountain Drive. Been in the city of Fayetteville for about 11 years. Also, co-chairman of the Board of Directors over at the Agape Pregnancy Support Services. Let's pray. Father, we're so thankful tonight for the privilege of being here. We're thankful, Lord, for all those that have come to participate and to see what's going on in our city. Lord, when I think of a city, Lord, I think of our citizens. I pray, Lord, that you would touch our citizens tonight. Lord, that you would help us all to be involved more. And, Lord, I pray that you would just do that for your glory. Lord, when I think of a city, I think of our churches. Lord, I prayed that each body of worshippers here, God, would be involved in our city more. That we'd get out of our four walls, God, and be salted and light. Lord, when I think of a city, I think of investments. And, Lord, I pray that you would help this city to invest in our future. And, Lord, it would not just be, God, for one party or another or one race or another, but, Lord, all of us that abide here. And, Lord, I pray, God, that you would do it for your glory. Lord, when I think of a city, I think of taxes. And, Lord, when I think of taxes, I think of the council and the police department and the fire department and all the staff members of this city that are supported. Lord, I pray that you would touch each of them. Put a hedge around each of them that works for this city. Lord, may they remember that they work for the people. And, Lord, I thank you for it and give you praise for it. Lord, when I think of a city, I think of yearning for a better, betterment, a better future. Lord, I pray that you would help this city council and the leaders of our city to make wise decisions for our future. Lord, let it be more than appearance. Let it be attitude and actions likewise. And, Lord, I pray that tonight, Lord, as the council meets, they hear all the things that's on the agenda. Lord, I pray that you'd give them wisdom beyond their wisdom, for let the wisdom come from above. And, Lord, as I think about our city, Lord, I ask, God, as I stand in the gap for the city and for the council, Lord, I ask, God, seriously upon my heart, for I have a burden, God, as a pastor here for 11 years now. Lord, I have a burden for this city and I ask, God, that you would search our hearts in this room tonight. Lord, we need you and we need revival. And, Lord, I pray that you would search our hearts. Let our motives be pure. Lord, let our hearts be pure. Let our minds be pure. And, Lord, I pray that you would forgive us as a city, Lord, for the things that are going on, God, and I pray you'd give wisdom to correct them. Lord, in instance, Lord, the prostitution and the sex trafficking and, Lord, the drugs and the alcohol and, Lord, all the other eels and vices in our city, God, I pray that you would give our city wisdom to be able to deal with them and deal with them according to your guidance and your wisdom. Lord, we love you tonight. We give you all the praise, the honor, and the glory. And, Lord, we ask all these things in the mighty name of Jesus, the name that is above every name. Amen. Thank you.
Oversea, Oversea Hayden, would you come and tell us a little bit about yourself and your ministry? We thank you for the prayer, sir.
Like I said, I'm pastor to Wesleyan Pentecostal Church in District 2, over right beside the Crown Coliseum. We moved here 11 years ago to help a pastor. After we got here, about three years, he resigned. Church asked me what I was gonna do, and I said, "Well, the Lord sent me to Fayetteville, so we're gonna keep the church going." When we did that, we had about nine people left, and now we run anywhere from 40 to 50. We're heavily involved in the homeless community here in the city. We have two street services a month, and every Sunday and every Wednesday, our church buses pick up the homeless and bring them to our church where we have a service with them and feed lunch to them. Also, as I said, my wife and I, my daughter's here with me tonight. We volunteer every Monday night at the Agape Pregnancy Center on Russell Street, and it's just a privilege to be here. Thank you all for which all that y'all do, and I want you to know that this church, our church, is praying for this city. God bless you all.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, he's a preaching man too, 'cause he preached for me.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you so much. At this time, I will defer to Councilmember Kathy Jensen. Have a special guest with us tonight. Tell us a little bit about her.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I introduce our Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council member, I would like to recognize the government class of Ms. Weaver at Reed Ross Classical School. They're over there in the back, right there, and they've come to visit us. Ms. Weaver, would you please stand? Ms. Weaver brings her class every semester, and I've gone to speak to her class, and I think Councilmember Waddell has too, and the mayor has. She is really teaching these young minds how to be leaders, and we appreciate you. And, Council, we're gonna take a picture with them at the end of the meeting, if that's okay with everybody. Thank you, Ms. Weaver. So, we are going to introduce tonight our new chair of the Cumberland, Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. She has been here before. It is DeeDee Efron, and she is our chair for the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council and the vice chair for our state council. So, she's gonna tell us a little bit what's getting ready to happen this year, and she's very excited about what's getting ready to happen.
Good evening. My name is Dayde Efron, and I'm in the 11th grade at Massey Hill Classical High School and from the 8th district. I'm very excited to be here and update you on the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. On Thursday, August 15th, 2019, the newly elected state youth council leaders will be sworn in here in Fayetteville, North Carolina, at the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council office, which is, which myself and Alexis Diana, the vice chair of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council, will be a part of the ceremony. In preparation for the upcoming year, the Fayetteville Youth Council Executive Board has had a retreat to discuss how we can make this year just as great as the previous years and reach our new goals. I am very eager to announce that we have been planning new events for different causes that makes our community better, and that includes collaborating with other local youth councils. This Friday, members of the executive boards will also be traveling to Wilson, North Carolina, where we will formally meet the Wilson Youth Council. We will be hosting a service learning project with them in September that is bound to be a huge success and that will impact the Wilson area and our youth councils. Lastly, I am proud to say that on Monday, August 19th, 2019, we will have our first official youth council meeting for the 2019-2020 school year. We are inviting 10th, 11th, and 12th graders from public, private, and homeschools to join us. If you would like more information, you can email askfcyc@gmail.com. All of the things that we have done wouldn't be possible without our amazing sitting council, and on behalf of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council, I would like to say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am, and welcome, and keep up the good work. At this time, I'll go to Councilmember DJ Hare for an announcement.
Thank you, Mayor. Tomorrow, August 13th, at, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. over at our Smith Recreation Center, I am a part of a seminar that our community development department is doing. It is called Making Your Money Work. If you have any concerns about personal banking, home buying tips, credit, retirement, estate planning, life insurance, wheels, a lot of things sometimes we don't even think about, it gets a little too late, we would love for you to come over and listen to some of the, some very good presenters tomorrow. That's gonna be tomorrow between 6:00 to 9:00 at Smith Recreation Center on the 13th of August. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Good information. At this time, I'll go to Councilmember Johnny Dawkins.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. I wanted to make sure that the public is aware Franklin Graham is coming to Fayetteville, be at Festival Park on October 1st. This is gonna be a big event. You can learn more at decisionamerica.com. Now, Mayor Passick and some of us are old enough to remember his daddy, Billy Graham, when he came through town and did his tent crusades. And this time, his son is coming to town, and Fayetteville is the first city in North Carolina that he is coming to. So, it's a great honor for us. I know there's gonna be a lot of folks involved. Decisionamerica.com. And then, if you want to be a counselor, September the 10th at Manor Church at 6:30, they're gonna have training, and they, they need about 700 counselors, to give you an idea. So, hopefully, you'll see a lot of these posters around town about Franklin Graham. Thank you, Mayor Colvin.
Thank you, sir. You're telling on your age a bit there, huh? Councilman Arp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and just wanna remind all our citizens and local communities that the Fayetteville Woodpeckers are in the, in the final stretch of their season. They'll be closing their season out on September the 2nd. The 1st is fan appreciation. The 2nd of September is Family Day. Pretty big, though. They're making a push right now. Looks like they've got a chance to make the playoffs and wanna encourage people to come out. I would say it's a good news story. So far, with 58 games, we've had 211,000 people come through the gate to go to games. That's 211,000 people who've come downtown to Fayetteville. And the average attendance is about 3,639 per game, and that's pretty significant. Last I heard, we're close to leading the league in attendance for single-game attendance. So, excited for Fayetteville. Wanna encourage you to come out. Support your community. Come downtown, have dinner, do a little shopping, and go catch the Woodpeckers here, our hometown team. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Arp, and for all of you looking for a good family event, whether you're a baseball fan or not, it's a tremendous event for family and bonding, and you see people you haven't seen, so we invite you to do it. So, thank you for that information. At this time, I'll defer to Mayor Pro Tim Mohn, and I will ask that the Icon interns, if they could meet me at the podium.
Right. So, we're gonna recognize our summer Icon interns. Innovative career opportunities now is the Cumberland County Schools Career and Technical Education Work-Based Learning Program Platform. Work-based learning is an educational approach utilizing the workplace to provide students with the competencies and skills that allow them to connect school experiences to real-life work activities through career exploration, exposure to real workplace, and achievement of work-related skills. This year, we had 51 Icon interns that were hired at the city of Fayetteville, Cumberland County Schools, the Public Works Commission, Fayetteville Technical Community College, as well as a few in the private sector. Councilmember Jensen is gonna read off the names of the students that were able to make it here, and that way, Mayor Colvin can recognize each and every one of them.
So, we're gonna do a little changeover. I'm gonna give this list to Councilmember Waddell because she was very involved in the Icon project, so I'm gonna let her read the names.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jensen. The first name is Alexis Perry. She interned with the city of Fayetteville Fire Department. Caprice Faust, the city of Fayetteville Economic and Community Development. Cameron Faust, Cumberland County Schools. Or is it, yeah, it's Cameron. Ebony Gooch, city of Fayetteville Police Department. Ishmael Galarza, H&amp;H Group. Slow down. I'm going too fast. They better keep up, y'all, huh? Kaitlin Brooks, PWC Analyst. Daniel McNeil, FTCC Lab Assistant. Marissa Carter, PWC Legal. Logan Baker, PWC Legal. Rishma An, is it Antoine? Yay. Cumberland County Schools. Caleb Williams, Cumberland County Schools. Richard Mercado, Cumberland County Schools. Morgan Wright, city of Fayetteville Human Resources. Beth Howell, IDI Services. And is Mrs. Brantley in the room? Nori Brantley? Come on up. And while Ms. Brantley is coming up, I would like to take a moment and just ask if there are any members of the community who own businesses or no business owners, please get involved with the Icon program. We are always looking for community partners to support our young people and giving, giving them job training skills. And you can see, we've got an excellent group of young people. And Ms. Brantley is who you can reach out to should you choose to partner with us in that venture. Thank you, Ms. Brantley. That's who I have. Oh, okay. Wait, wait, wait. I'm gonna call the other names, just in case. Wallace Vincent, city of Fayetteville. Is it Zaraya? Zariah. Zaraya Farmer. Okay. She interned with the city of Fayetteville. Rain Williams, also interned with Fayetteville Technical Community College. Angela Schwebenz. Did I get it right? Okay. And then, Edna McCoy. Okay. Did I miss anybody? Right on.
Oh, I thought they were shaking hands. Oh, she wanna hand out the stuff, and then she wanna put us in order.
I'm still short. I always end up not in the picture, 'cause I'm short. Go on to me.
Well, that is, just before we, we give a few minutes to, I'm not sure. Just before we give a few minutes for, for parents and families, we would like to, you know, a few years ago, some councilmembers and myself were at National Legal Cities. We had other cities. Savannah was bragging about its intern program. We started out kinda flat. Councilmember Waddell and Jensen, to see that this number of participants from where we came from, the first few years, it was like five or seven, and now we're up in the 50s. I'm confident that we'll be over 100 in a few years, so thank y'all so much. Thank you to the parents for supporting this effort. Thank you all for what you did. Let's give them one more round of applause.
Mr. Mayor, we, we need to recognize Councilmember Wright, too. He was a very significant part in this. Yes, he was.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright. I want a certificate for signing all those certificates, okay?
And I hope you sign a lot more next year.
Mr. Mayor, I, I concur with Mr. Bill Crisp that we should have 100 next year. We had 50 this year. Let's double it next year.
All right. We look forward to it. Thank you all. All right, Council, let's get down to some business. Item 5.0 is the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
There's a change. There's an adjustment on that. Yes. All right. So, it's a motion by Councilmember Arp to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
The second by Councilmember Wright. All those, any discussion on the motion?
Hang on a second. The attorney's looking at it.
Madam Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, there was item 6.04.
So, you'd rather have that now than...
Yes, that's at the approval of the agenda.
Okay. All right. So, will you, I think it was Mayor Pro Tim, we'll go to you for...
Yes, the motion would be to move item 6.05 off of consent, making it 9.02, which would be a public hearing.
All right. There's a, there's a motion to approve for, with the following corrections by Mayor Pro Tim. Is the second by Councilmember Arp?
That's correct.
Any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes. Adam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. Item 6.0 is the consent.
Mr. Mayor, um...
Councilman Larry Wright?
Yes, sir. I would like to pull 6.04 for up or down vote.
6.04 or 5?
6.04. Yes, sir, at this time.
All right. There's a motion to approve the consent with the exception of item 6.04. Is there a second? Oh, okay. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Waddell? Any discussion on the motion to approve the consent with the exception of the item 6.04? All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. Item 6.04, Councilmember Wright.
Yes, sir. Wanted to pull this item for up or down vote, and I understand that if it's not a unanimous vote, then it would go for a public hearing. If that, right, madam?
I think there was, the guidance she gave upstairs reflected that, but I think that when she came back downstairs, it was that that is our normal process for these items. So, as we take this up or down vote, I guess, based on the determination of that, I guess they'll, you can wrap that in a motion to set a public hearing. Is that correct, Madam Attorney? Okay. All right. So, with that, I'll defer back to you, Councilmember Wright.
So, this vote would be to pull this item, that this item would go automatically to a public hearing.
So, so there is a motion to, if I'm understanding it correct, to move item 6.04 to a public hearing? Is that correct?
Yes. Yes.
All right. So, there's a motion on the floor by Councilmember Wright. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, point of clarification. Shouldn't we vote on the motion as, as it's presented in there?
That was kind of the way I understood it, that it was, a vote would take place, and then, based on the results of that, then I guess you would need a subsequent action to send it to a public hearing. Is that... That was how it was explained upstairs, but she was saying, basically, there was, uh... There was just precedent that way. Madam Attorney, you wanna clarify that?
So, Mayor, you're correct. Initially upstairs, my understanding was that if this was not unanimous, then the action would be to set it for a public hearing. As we, as you alluded to and as we discussed, however, in reading the, the city code, it does not appear that a public hearing is required, that you can simply set it for an up or down vote. If the vote passes, by whatever margin, you may move on without setting a public hearing.
Okay. So, but what you were saying is that the standard that we've practiced before is if it's voted on and it's not unanimous, then it goes to a public hearing? Is that what you were explaining upstairs? Even though you're just saying it's not a, a, a city rule, that was just the precedent, is what you're saying?
That is the practice. Yes, Mayor.
All right. Did have a couple of questions here. I saw Councilmember Dawkins and then Hare and Crisp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Madam Attorney, there, another motion. We're gonna go ahead and vote on this particular item. Is that correct?
That is my understanding, that the motion on the floor is to vote on this item, and if it is not unanimous, it will be set for a public hearing.
All right. And I want to encourage the council to vote in favor of this particular request because we need to keep this project going. The Civil War and Reconstruction History Center Foundation has committed to maneuver some buildings, and they need this approval to be able to continue to do what they have committed to us to do. So, we're not committing to the Civil War History Center at this time. We're allowing this particular foundation to maneuver buildings and do what they need to continue to do in their quest for state money. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So, if we have, have questions, we'll circle back to the discussion phase at, at that time. So, I'll, I'll recognize the lights that are pressed for questions just to make sure everybody's clear on what it is that we're voting on. So, Councilmember Hare?
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I think I'm gonna support, uh, Councilmember Wright with the item, because this would give the opportunity for citizens to also give their input. Tonight, if it stayed on the consent, they, they wouldn't have had that opportunity. So, for that reason, for, for, as that is one of my reasons, I'm just gonna go ahead and move forward and support, um, the item.
All right. Uh, Councilman Crisp?
I just need clarification. It apparently appears to me that this is a request for rezoning. It probably went through planning and zoning, a straight-up rezoning from mixed use. I believe Councilman Wright is going to motion, hasn't got a second yet, so there's no motion on the floor.
Not one, yep.
He's probably going to second, I wanna get clarified, to remove this and hold a public hearing. Is that what your motion is going to be? But if there's six votes in favor of the public hearing, then we will have a public hearing, right? We don't have to have eight votes.
That's correct, uh, Mr. Crisp. The practice has been if it's not unanimous, that you would set it for a public hearing.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Right. So, I don't think it was a matter of discussion of whether it passed or failed. It was just saying that precedent had been if it wasn't unanimous, yeah. All right, Councilmember Waddell, and then we will, uh, oh, I got Arp and Cullerton. It's not about this?
I guess it could be. Uh, City Manager, would you please reiterate what you stated upstairs in terms of the zoning and how that area likely, because presently it's mixed residential, correct?
MR5, yes, ma'am.
And the rezoning is a request to rezone it to office industrial, correct? So, whether, um, whether this organization moves forward with securing the funding or not, I think that you gave us an indication upstairs that it's very unlikely, due to the location of the property in question, that it would ever be considered for mixed residential. So, can you give a little bit of, can you give some information on that?
Um, yes, ma'am. Um, on page, uh, three of four in the City Council Action Memo, the top portion reads, "The zoning commission and the planning staff recommend approval, uh, of the rezoning to ONI based on the following. The proposed zoning map amendments, rezoning implements the policies adopted in the UDO and the 2010 land use plan." Consistent with that, now, this area, um, likely because of its historic nature, would not, um, be something that would be developed, um, as, as residential. Um, and as we also shared upstairs, the, um, the foundation, uh, is moving one or two of the historic structures so that they can continue their fundraising efforts as well. And in order to operate those, um, buildings on those locations, the rezoning is necessary. But if it's council's desire to set this for a public hearing, um, we would, um, get busy tomorrow and try to set that for the earliest date in front of City Council. Um, and if you do have additional questions about that, um, I think we, there may be someone here, uh, but I think...
We're clear.
Did I answer your question now?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
All right, Councilman Arp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um... I'm gonna follow on with, with Ms. Waddell's line of question. So, based off of what was in our package, and based off of what you shared with us, Mr. City Manager, um, with the rezoning that would be, uh, which would be made from mixed-use residential to office and institutional, uh, the, the nonprofit that's pursuing the Civil War History and Reconstruction Museum would be able to go ahead and do building improvements that are located on there that are historical buildings. Is that correct?
Yes.
At no cost to the city?
Correct.
So, they would, they would do repairs that need to be made to these buildings at no cost to the city?
That's correct.
Okay? And, and that the, um, that the zoning would be beneficial to the city in any regard, because in the future, based off of what you just shared, it's highly likely that it's gonna be used for office and institutional, not for mixed-use residential.
That again is correct.
But...
The current zoning allows, uh, for residential. This puts it into a position that it could be preused office institutional, which includes some residential. So, it's more encompassing, and it allows the types of uses typically allowed for institutions, including government entities.
Yeah. But, but if for some reason...
It's still ours.
We needed to go back and rezonate. It's a simple rezoning. We could change it back at a future date.
Correct. And for the record, uh, the manager asked me to come up, so Jerry Newton.
Right. And the, and the benefit by approving this and allowing it to go forward, it allows the timeline, uh, for the effort to stay on track while the funding piece is being solved with the state. It allows them to continue their fundraising, stay on their timeline. It doesn't slow that down, which would be detrimental to all the parties involved. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um... Are there any cons? Is there anything bad about, about rezoning this that we haven't discussed? I mean, we just talked about the pros. What, what are the cons?
Really, from the, uh, permission, permission? From our standpoint, there aren't. This is, uh, this is state-owned property, or it could revert back to the city if things all fall apart. It remains an institutional. Office institutional is one that includes, incorporates some of the residential components. It puts the city in position to owning, uh, a piece if things all fall apart. If it doesn't, we've moved forward in the advancement of it. It was part of the deal, uh, part of the structure of these multiple parcels and the 12 acres being assembled for what may and what, um, be that Civil War Reconstruction History Center. So, no, if there are cons, we did not come up with those. It's a, it's a better way to protect what represents a significant piece of property up on the ridge in Haymount.
Mr. Mayor and Council, for that reason, I'm supportive of the proposed rezoning.
All right, I thank you. Okay. Councilman, uh, Cullerton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This went through zoning and planning already. Was there anything input from the public during those meetings?
Um, all the property owners, it was over 100, I believe, were informed. Uh, there, there was no negative, uh, comments on it. There were some people who came into the office just wondering what was going on. Once we shared that information with them, they were happy to see it happen.
So, all 100 property owners are affected by this, uh, slight modification in its zoning? Already had the opportunity to have input, and, um, you didn't have any, uh, negative feedback from any of those people?
That's correct.
And if we held a public hearing at this point, what possibilities could that result in?
I, I think it would end up becoming more of a forum for people to express opinions about what they want to see on the future of that, as opposed to Landy's decision based off of the use for rezoning.
But the fact that zoning and planning have already signed off on this and agree, uh, would it just be this council's then decision at that point, whether we'd wanna prove it or not?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, I would be in agreement with some of the others that... Yeah, that, uh, seems like we're already at that point.
All right, well...
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, uh, I guess my, my question is for, stay, I'm coming, Mayor Pro Tim. I saw you itching. I wrote my name down, I promise. Um, so, if this was, um, kind of the precedent of the way, the way the city conducted business, this, the way they handled that, um, what was, what was council's intention to make that a part of the normal process? That when you vote for something, if it's not unanimous, to set a public hearing? What were they trying to accomplish if they followed the, the zoning, uh, meetings, they followed the planning meetings? They gave people who were impacted due notice. Why did the council involve in a practice that was irrelevant?
Well, I think, Mayor, the process is that if there is no appeal, so as you pointed out, if the planning staff and the zoning commission agree, that's how it gets to your zoning, that, excuse me, that's how it gets to your consent agenda. But it is a legislative decision, meaning it is totally within the purview of the council. And so, when it has not been unanimous, there has been a public hearing, uh, set to allow the public certainly to weigh in on the rezoning, and then the council to make a decision.
Thank you. And so, um, I guess my question would be, why should this be any different than the way we've done it before?
That is certainly, uh, the decision of the council.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim?
Uh, City Manager, Mr. Hewitt, I understand the purpose behind this rezoning, and I also wanna confirm that when we did the initial land transfer agreement, that we included a clawback provision that's saying, basically, if the project did not move forward, i.e. the state didn't come up with the 40, 50 million dollars, the project died, that land would revert back to the city. And then, whether we zoned it tonight or not, you know, it, it would be office and, you know, ONI tonight if we do it. So, we do have a clawback provision that should that project not move forward, that land comes back to the city. Is that true?
That is true.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Uh, well, council, I think we've discussed it. Um, Mr. Wright, you wanna restate your motion for the public hearing piece, and we'll...
Yeah, yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, just wanted, uh, 6.04, uh, for an up or down vote. Um, if not unanimous, um, then it would go to a public hearing.
Well, well, no. I think, I think your motion needs to be, uh, to, to approve this separately, up or down.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then council will make a legislative decision as to what, how to respond to that, if it's like we normally do or something different.
I'm just, okay.
So, the motion needs to be to approve this...
To approve...
As presented.
As presented.
And you can read it just for clarification.
Yes. Yes, sir. My motion would be to not, to not approve, yes. Um, rezoning of the property of a mixed residential, 5 MR5, to office or institutional, uh, OI, OI, location between Hay Street, uh, Branson Street, MLK Highway, and Myrover Street, containing approximately 12-plus acres, and being the property of NC Civil War and Reconstruction History Center Foundation and the state of North Carolina.
So, there's a motion by Councilmember Wright to deny rezoning of item 6.04 as stated. Is there a second on that motion to deny rezoning? Okay, uh, motion dies. For lack of a second, Councilmember Arp?
Mr. Mayor, if it pleases the council, I would move that the rezoning of the property for mixed-use residential, 5 MR5, to office and institutional ONI, located between Hay Street, Branson Street, MLK Junior Freeway, and Myrover Street, containing approximately 12-plus or minus acres, and being the property to the North Carolina Civil War and Reconstruction History Center Foundation and state of North Carolina be approved as presented.
So, there's a motion by Councilmember Arp. There's a second by Councilmember Dawkins to approve item 6.04. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Councilman Crisp, and lights please on the discussion, so I'll know.
Yes, sir. I, I just wanted to make sure that the public understands what we're doing here. This is not a vote for or against the Civil War History Center. This is a vote to rezone property over there, from mixed-use residential to organization and industrial. This has nothing to do, in the long run, with whether or not the Civil War History Center will be built. This is a straightforward rezoning. I just want the public to know that. We're not running something by you. We're not cutting any corners, uh, as an endorsement to the Civil War History Museum. This is a simple rezoning. If they don't build it, the land comes back to the city. What we rezoned is ONI. We can always go back and rezone it commercial or whatever council needs to at that time. Just want the public to understand.
Thank you.
Where'd that come from?
Y'all getting ready to make a bad vote.
All right. So, uh, council, that is, that is to, uh, that is just clarifications what Councilmember Crisp was doing, is that there are two, really two points of discussion here, but there's one motion on the floor, and that is to approve or disapprove the rezoning. Uh, however, I would hope that council would, uh, entertain the next steps in the event, uh, at the conclusion of this vote, to whether it is to follow the normal protocol and allow the public to speak, or, uh, or not. And so, that's a legislative decision. Uh, if there are no further questions, there's a, uh, motion by Councilmember Arp. There's a second by Councilmember Dawkins. And, Mr. Hare, is that, you had a question? Okay.
Just wanna make sure I'm understanding correctly the reason that I kinda held back. After it, we, uh, do an up or down for the rezoning, then we have a opportunity to come back for citizen input. Is, now, help me understand, was that just what you were saying?
Yeah. Tip, Ms., Madam, uh, Attorney, will you explain the, the normal process that you talked about to where these cases are then, uh, referred, or given, the public is given the opportunity to speak? Uh, how does that go about? Is it a separate motion, or is it auto, is it directed from the council?
That would be a separate motion, Mayor.
Okay. So, I guess there'll be a second, sep- separate motion to address that portion of it. All right, all right, council, clearing the board. All right. Again, let me repeat it. This motion is to approve the rezoning. Uh, there's a motion by Councilmember Arp. There's a second by Councilmember Dawkins. We've had adequate discussion on the motion, so at this time, I'll look to you for your votes to approve rezoning. Uh, Mr. Hare? Madam Clerk, that motion carries, uh, eight to two. Those voting in favor, Councilmember Crisp, uh, Cullerton, Arp, Moan, Jensen, Hare, Dawkins, and Waddell. Those voting in opposition, Councilmember, uh, Wright and Culver. All right. Uh, I'll entertain a motion for, uh, Councilmember Hare.
Okay, Mayor, now, I, I, I voted and supported this item.
Hold on a minute, Councilmember Hare. I was, I was resetting the lights, and y'all were pressing buttons, so I couldn't, I think, uh, Councilmember Arp beat you to that light, and so I'll refer to him, and then I'll go to you.
So, Mr. Mayor, in keeping with the tradition of the council, I was gonna move that we, uh, direct the staff to schedule a public hearing, so that we maintain the tradition of what we've done in the past. But I didn't know if Mr. Hare had a question.
No, sir. I was gonna make that same motion, because that's the...
Sounds like a second by you and the first one.
That's a second. That's the only reason I supported it. Yes, sir.
All right. So, we have a motion by Councilmember Arp. There's a second by Councilmember Hare, uh, to set a public hearing to allow public input. Uh, and there are questions. So, I'll go to Councilmember Crisp and then Moan.
Mr. Mayor, I've been here a while. I don't recall us having, after we approve a motion for a straight-up rezoning that has been recommended by zoning and planning. I don't recall us going to this extent on a simple rezoning. Again, I say, this is not an endorsement to build the Civil War History Center. This was simply a straight rezoning. When have we allowed the citizens, once we've looked at it, they've had occasion to go to planning and voiced their concern over the rezoning? They've had occasion to go to zoning and voiced their concern over the rezoning? And now you're saying that we have been... Why didn't we do that on 6.03, a rezoning? Or the other rezonings that we have? I just don't remember. Or 6.02, all the other rezonings? I don't recall us doing this. I've been sitting in this seat almost 12 years.
Well, of course, I wouldn't argue with the dean, but, uh, that was, that was legal's, uh, information, so you may direct that question.
Don't misunderstand me. I still have the floor. Don't misunderstand me. I'm not opposed to a motion to take it to a public hearing. But my concern is, we just approved the rezoning. So, when we do the public hearing, what are we doing, gonna do? Go back and undo the rezoning that we just approved?
Legal.
The word was unanimous if it wasn't unanimous.
Yeah. Uh, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim had a, I think he's got an answer to that, and I've got a host of lights, and we've got some other items, council. All right, Mayor Pro Tim?
This is for the city attorney to clarify how I remember doing these for the last 10 years. If a zoning case goes before the zoning commission, and it's approved unanimously, and then it's also recommended by the planning staff to be approved, it automatically goes onto our consent agenda, because no one oppo- opposed it. We've had times where the planning staff will make a recommendation maybe to approve, and the zoning commission makes a recommendation to disapprove. Now, it's not unanimous. Those cases automatically go under our public hearing zoning cases, like tonight with the special use permit. I do not remember, we have pulled items off of consent and set a public hearing. Tonight was the first time we pulled it off, and this is my memory, and I could be wrong. We pulled it off of consent. A decision was made, and now a subsequent motion is being made to have a public hearing as Councilmember... as Councilmember Chris said. Attorney McDonough, do I have my process right? If it's both recommended by planning and zoning commission, no opposition, it goes on consent. Now, special use permits, quasi judicial hearings on land automatically goes to a public hearing. Would that be correct, ma'am?
That is correct, and that is consistent with what I said earlier, which is if the decision is not unanimous, it is usually pulled and set for a public hearing. Counsel chose to do this as a two-step process instead of, as Mr. Wright had originally proposed, which was to set it for a public hearing.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Councilman Wright, you, you finish her?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I don't have any other comments at this time, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so counsel, I, I thought I heard a motion by Councilmember Art to set this for a public hearing. I think that, uh, you know, I think we've talked about it enough that the public is certainly interested in, and I think giving them opportunity to, to speak airs on the side of caution and transparency. So, uh, if there are no further questions, the, the motion is by Councilmember Art, and it was seconded by Councilmember Hare. You, you have your light on, ma'am?
No, I do not.
Oh.
It just came to you.
Just came to you, okay.
I'm sorry.
So, last, second round of discussion, last round of discussion, Ms. Mayor?
This is my first round.
All right.
My first time.
All right.
So, I'm just going to ask a few questions. So, what we're talking about, if we rezone this property, it is not going to cost the city one dime, is what I'm, I'm hearing. Is that correct? They're going to go in to these buildings and refurbish them if, if this goes through? Is that correct?
Yeah, well, we voted on that, this is...
Well, I did, I...
That is correct, ma'am.
Okay, I just said I wanted to ask two questions. And then my next question is, I want to reiterate what, um, Councilmember Cullerton said, that when people come for the public hearing, is it go, it will be city residents? Is that correct?
It, it, um, anyone that is interested to speak on it, the, um, there is a, um, uh, technically, the council is taking the vote and the property is rezoned.
Correct.
So, if the, um, typically, what would have, how the process is working, I know it's been said already, but you would have pulled it and set it for a public hearing, and that would have been the action.
Okay.
And, but because it has been rezoned, um, if there's, um, and a public hearing, if you're going to hold one, would be on the rezoning of the land, not necessarily the plan for, because O and I, anything that can go in an O and I can go in an O and I. It just so happens that the proposed use is the, the foundation, uh, is the history center. But, um, that's why when you're considering rezonings as you normally do, it's not always very specific. It is what is allowed in that zoning classification. And so, that is what the public, if you were going to hold a public hearing, would be commented on, or all of those uses. But the defined use that we know is going to go there because you've transferred the land is the history center.
Thank you, City Manager. You, you explained it exactly how I wanted you to for the record. Thank you.
Okay, all right, so, uh, I did have a question for Mr. Newton, just, uh, general knowledge. So, this, this property can't be renovated, um, unless it's rezoned? Did I hear you say that?
You didn't hear me say that, but what you will hear me say is that the buildings that have been moved could go through renovation as if they were residential, but because they're wanting to use them for commercial business office use, that requires, when we move over to building code, a different set of standards. And that's the reason why until the rezoning, that part can't happen.
So, indirectly, uh, the site is being prepared for an office. And so, I guess, you know, even though we're saying that one is not related to the other, it really is because you're renovating buildings to prep for an office, which leads to that. So, I think the public should have an opportunity to, to, uh, say whatever it is they want to say about that, because that is the underlying, uh, objective, is to get it prepared for an office for a project that you're asking them to speak on. So, it is related. Um, but, uh, I'll go to Councilmember Cullerton and then Hare.
I'm done, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have a couple clarification points I need. Went through planning, went through zoning, hundred or more residents directly impacted by this minor actions, already had opportunity to speak on it, put their public input, none of which had any objections to it. Both those commissions boards passed it. It came to council, we passed it eight to two. Now, we want to go back, have a public hearing about anybody in the city that doesn't have any effect by this rezoning, have input. Is the input going to be strictly on the zoning, or is the input going to be on the history museum? Are we going to restrict it to that? Because what I feel is going to happen is we're going to get a bunch of people in here who have objections about a project and not about the zoning, and that's what we're talking about.
But is that a question? Uh, so I think we voted on the zoning.
Yeah, and passed it.
And that decision been made, yeah. But I think the public should have input on anything that involves the public. I mean, and so that's not just the people who live in that proximity, but it, what a notice is sent to, property owners are already sent to residents who live in and around the area. Mr. Newton?
Adjacent properties.
Adjacent property owners or to the doors of the people who rent possibly? Okay. So, I, I think that try, trying to restrict whatever the public has to say about it is, you know, just a slippery slope, but, uh, however...
Well, I think it's a, Mr. Mayor, I think it's cart before the horse or horse before the cart at this point, I don't even know. I mean, we just passed the, I don't see the point at this point of having a public hearing on something this council has already approved. Or are we going to say that the public hearing after a public hearing, we're going to come back and vote on this again? I'm just trying, I'm just trying to get the wisdom in, in having a public hearing at this stage.
Well, again, uh, I, I don't think that the decisions, if, if, if that question was posed to me, are isolated about the zoning, because the zoning is just one step toward preparing it for an office, which is about something that will involve the public and its dollars. So, to give them an opportunity to speak pro or con, and to not try to direct their conversation one way or another, I think would be prudent with the council, and I understand, consistent with the way we've done it. But again, that, that'll be an up or down vote that we really need to get to, uh, here.
Maybe this is a question for the attorney or somebody else. What happens after this public hearing? Does counsel then have the opportunity to go back and vote on this again? Depending on that input of this public hearing? What could result after this public hearing that this council would, would need to take action on?
I'm sorry, Mr. Cullerton. So, you're saying that after the public hearing on the rezoning?
Yeah, that we're calling for a public hearing right now. Well, we get that input, what is counsel going to do with that input?
Well, I'm understanding the mayor to say that the, the public hearing is related to any and everything, not just the rezoning.
Right.
My, my question is, what, what, is there action this council needs to take after that public hearing? After we hear that input that we want from the citizens? What, what do we do with that information?
You would give direction to the staff if the interest of the council is to reconsider the rezoning and to change that decision, then that could occur? Or would be whatever direction the council is so inclined? Because again, as I'm understanding from the mayor, the public hearing is not just about the rezoning.
Well, what I, what I was pointing out was that tonight, we're having a public hearing on item nine point zero one, uh, about revenue bonds that have nothing to do with the city, but we are just giving a forum for the public to come up, make whatever comments that they would like to make as a part of the process. So, that was what I was pointing out, that it was not necessarily specific to rezoning, because you've already decided that it's going to be rezoned.
Well, i- in the interest of time as we have to move forward, I'll, I'll go ahead and, thank you.
So, now, Councilmember Wright, then we'll call for questions, guys. Oh, well, I see you now. All right, Councilmember Wright and then Waddell.
Well, you know, I just believe that the First Amendment, uh, gives us the right for, for free speech. And a public, uh, forum will ju- uh, just allow people to express themselves, um, on the matter at hand. That's all. There is nothing that we're going to do after the public hearing is over, but we give the people an opportunity to speak. And we know, sitting up here and out there, that what the big picture is. And so, we, we can't avoid the elephant in the room by not allowing the people to speak. And it, it is what it is. And so, that's what I believe, and that's why I made the motion.
Thank you, Councilman Wright. Councilman Waddell?
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. I won't, um, propose to speak for the other nine members of council, but for the viewing public and for the members in this room, I do want to say that for me, this case is not a case of trying to determine whether or not we're moving forward with the Civil War and Reconstruction Center. That was a conversation that was had with the council prior to this council. We have had conversations about this piece of property, this particular council, where we all agree that if, if the, the agreement was not carried to fruition, that they had to meet in terms of their fundraising, that that property would come back to the city. That's already been decided. We, I think we may have already had public hearings, I don't know. That's been decided. For me, tonight, this is about what is the best use for that property? And the best use for that property, if you know where it's at, is not necessarily mixed residential. Whether this entity puts office industrial there or another group five years down the road puts office and industrial there, that's the reason for my vote. I would also like to say that when we do rezoning, it is not my recollection that every rezoning case comes for a public hearing. I've, I've, we've had a lot of rezoning cases that were on consent, and once we pressed our button, some of them in my district, once we pressed our button, it was rezoned, and there was no public hearing. Um, so I, so that's not a matter of protocol. So, I just wanted to be very clear about that, and I would like to call for the vote because I think if we're just trying to have a public hearing for the sake of having a public hearing, and I just want to say this, as a member of the city of Fayetteville, I would be offended if people wanted to talk about it after they already made a decision. So, I think that that is, fill in the blank with whatever word you want to put in there. But, um, I'd like for us to call for the vote so that we can go ahead and move forward to the next item on the agenda.
Can I have my second say?
I, I see you, sir.
Very briefly. Mr. Mayor, the motion on the floor is to hold a public hearing on this rezoning, not on whether or not it's a forerunner for the Civil War History Center. Now, if in the future, there are those of us that want to have a public forum to see how the citizens feel about the Civil War History Center, that's a motion for another date and time. And that's what we're talking about, I think, in the long run here. But the motion made tonight is simply a public hearing to discuss six point zero four.
I don't know, you want to clarify that, Mr. Art? What was your motion? Yeah, Mr. Mr. Mayor, man, we kicked this horn a few times, didn't we?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I still, I didn't, I didn't, excuse me, I didn't yield the floor there. I didn't yield the floor yet, excuse me.
Well, well, well...
The point that I'm making, and I'll be with it, I'll be quick, Mr. Mayor. The point I'm making is, I have no objection if Councilman Wright or anybody else up here in the very near future would like to hold a public hearing to discuss and to get opinions from our citizens about the Civil War History Museum. But this is not the issue here tonight, thank you.
So, I will ask Mr. Art to restate the motion since he made it. Um, in that motion, just like you said, he can make it specific to, the public hearing is specific to this. Again, you said it's already been decided, and I agree with that. Or you can just set a public hearing and let the citizens say whatever it is they choose to say. Up to you, he's making the motion, they could all be made at whatever time or whoever chose to do it. So, Mr. Art, will you restate what your motion is?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My motion was to, to set a public hearing to receive public input on the office and institutional rezoning of the property located as described in the, in the motion that passed, uh, so that we could get input, if there's any kind of input on the O and I zoning.
All right, there was a motion on the floor for what was stated, there's a second by Councilmember Hare. We've discussed it. Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes to set the public hearing for conversation. Councilmember Jensen? All right. Yep?
All right, motion fails, let's move on.
All right, motion fails.
That's why we need eleven people on this council.
All right, counsel, uh, no, this ain't Hope Mills. Uh, item seven point zero one, uh, annual report of, uh, Fayetteville Fair Housing.
I knew it, I knew it was going to be five, five.
Oh, Madam Clerk, you didn't get the count, did you?
I didn't, no, I've got five, five, but not the names. Can you put them up again?
You didn't check. All right, counsel, we've got to have, uh, names for the minute, so please, uh, press what you just pressed, and remember, it's on TV, so, uh, is that right?
It's six, four now.
Yeah, where, where is, where is, uh? Well, we need, we need him in here, because I know everybody needs to be accountable for that. Madam Clerk, we'll search, we'll, can you get Mr. Moan for us, if you see him? All right, you got it. So, Madam Clerk, you'll go, you'll go to the footage for the minutes.
Yeah, I'll just watch the video recording.
All right, all right. Uh, counsel, we, uh, we can keep rolling. Item seven point zero one is the annual report for the Fayetteville Fair Housing Board. Good evening, Dr. Wade.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of councils. It's a pleasure to be with you again. At this time, the presentation of activities of twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen Fayetteville Fair Housing Board will be delivered by retired Army Command Sergeant Major and Fair Housing Board Member Otis Cuffey. Mr. Cuffey?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Mayor Protim, city council members. The Fair Housing Board, thank you for the opportunity to serve this community and for strongly endorsing and supporting the board's existence and mission. But I would be remiss if I didn't recognize the Human Relations Department's staff for the excellent support that it provided to the board and for the accomplishments of its projects and its objectives. The Fair Housing Board members are Ms. Mary John Williams, Mr. Eric Anderson, Mr. Renaldi Earl, Mr. Eduardo Jordan, and myself, Mr. Otis Cuffey. The board is honored to have been appointed by the city council to serve in support of an ordinance that promotes goal four of the city's strategic plan. And that is Fayetteville will be a highly desirable place to live, work, and recreate with a thriving neighborhoods and a high quality of life for all residents. The board is pleased to provide a summary of activities that highlight our efforts to address the allegations of housing discrimination and to sponsor events that promote community engagement and create a greater awareness of the city ordinance, including associated state and federal laws. A special thanks is extended to the city's communications department for their continued support. We notify residents of upcoming events through the city's public announcement webpage and other electronic and non-electronic methods. International Force Festival, the Dogwood Festival, and other events. We go where our residents are to disseminate information. I know none of you can translate that, but as you know, the city of Fayetteville is the all-American city, is meld a diverse community. Although this event was in Spanish, we added a youth component to this information session, storytime, which encourages the youth to learn through storytelling. We also offer a session for our French-speaking community. Thanks to Dr. Wade and Ms. Bulagon Zapate, who is the French language instructor. This re, this board reaches out to all residents of this great city. This event was coordinated for those who are definitely able, as Ms. Nazar likes to say. We collaborated with the legal aid of North Carolina, the North Carolina Fair Housing Project, to capture concerns from veterans and veterans organizations to ascertain how we can provide better support to our... how we can provide better support to our veterans. We also reach out to other professions. As you see here, we did something with the barbers, beauticians, and stylists. They are great people that, that talk to the community as they come in for their businesses. This event was to reach the more residents that are seeking information about fair housing. We've sponsored training for housing providers. Our goal is to educate all, including those that conduct real estate and banking transactions as it pertains to housing. We continue our efforts through partnership and collaboration. We collaborated with the National Community of Reinvestment Coalition. They are champions for fairness and fight for discrimination. This concludes the Fair Housing Annual Briefing, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Cuffey. Um, so, Mr. Mr. Manager, we need to receive that report. All right, so we'll, I'll entertain a motion to, some motion by Councilmember Dawkins, a second by Councilmember Waddell. Any discussion on the motion? All right, counsel, I'll look to you for your votes to accept the report as presented. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Item seven point zero two, uh, annual report, Fayetteville Cumberland County Human Relations. Now, it's Dr. Wade.
Yes, it is, sir, thank you very much. This report will also be delivered by a member of former of our services, a retired Army Lieutenant Colonel, and the Chief of the Human Resources Division at Womack Army Medical Center, Eric Olson. He's also the Vice Chair of the Commission.
You noticed the military stepping up here.
I see that. All the way? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Counsel. Uh, I'll do a little bit of reading and a lot of pictures, and I'll try to keep this moving, keep it fresh. Uh, but just a brief statement for those that aren't familiar with the Fayetteville and Cumberland County Human Relations Commission. Uh, this brief overview is of the activity of the commission as it's provided for your information. The efforts of the commissioners and staff are reflective of our commitment and dedication to serving our residents. Uh, it's been my honor to be associated with this group as servant leaders who have focused solely on the quality of life issues for our community. With ongoing trustworthy assistance and collaboration from the Human Relations Department, the commission has fostered outreach and awareness of its programs and services. Their respect, uh, their active involvement facilitated the successful accomplishment of our fiscal year two thousand eighteen, nineteen objectives. Thanks to the leadership of the city of Fayetteville and Cumberland County Commissioners for your ongoing support of our mission of excellence. Because of you, we were able to continue our work as defined by the ordinance involving equity, inclusion, and fair treatment for all. Okay, there's our, a group shot of our initial strategic planning session at the Transit Center here downtown. And there's a list of our current, uh, active commissioners. Uh, and what I'd like to point out in this slide is that life does happen, and there's always another great member of our community willing to step up. Because behind all these people that are currently serving are all these people who served during the course of the year and were asked for their assistance in helping us do all the great work that is done here in this community. And now our quick highlights. Again, this is our kickoff that we do every fall. Uh, this year was at the Transit Center. And a big part of that was, uh, some of our, our subcommittees. This one being the Rapid Response, which coincides with the city's planning and many other cities like ours in its, uh, response to events in the community, particularly hate crimes and those involving public safety with law enforcement. Our probably most positive and mo, most well-known contribution to the community is every year we, uh, honor our great leaders of the future with the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Scholarship Awardees. These are ten from last year and our ten awardees for this year. And many of you were at that event, thank you very much. Again, just like the Fair Housing Commission, a lot of our work is with community outreach, and we are a direct reflection of our community. And that's providing a lot of bilingual support, particularly during the, uh, little bit of rain that we get here in Fayetteville, just a little. And our staff doing pitching in as well during the storm. I love this list because as a, as a fourteen-year president of Fayetteville myself, uh, if it's a big event in the community, we're there. Uh, we want to be seen, we want to be there, and we'd be there anyway. But now we get to do it on behalf of the city and the county. We work a lot, again, with another big part of our community, of course, is, uh, Fort Bragg and the Pope Army Airfield. Always willing to, to get in, and they have active members on our commission appointed by their respective services, the Army and the Air Force. Our other big event, of course, is our annual awards reception. Uh, this year was at, uh, the Metropolitan Room. We had a little bit of, uh, celebrity and media fame this year, it went very well. Of course, it also helps to have a local celebrity and local hero of our very own, uh, chief, Fire Chief Ben Har, Ben Major. Fantastic event, those of you there, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Another great event, uh, kicked off this year, uh, was hosting for North Carolina as the state. Uh, there aren't a lot of, not all of the major cities of North Carolina have a Human Relations Commission. Uh, ours is very active, and we stepped up and hosted that event, and we'll probably do so again. Great event at Fayetteville Tech. The other part we do, of course, is teaching. Uh, the commission and department, uh, has collaborated with Mount Olive Missionary Baptist Church, the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office, Fayetteville Police, Fayetteville Fire, Fayetteville Technically Community College, to host a quarterly community dialogue of engagement series of the film The Hate U Give. Human Relations Commissioners have served as a breakout group facilitators in support of that series that is being used to foster community dialogue around several contemporary topics addressed after the film and over lunch in facilitated dialogue sessions. The quarterly meetings are held once a quarter at Fayetteville Tech from nine to four. Attendees included community residents, churches, business leaders, higher education officials, public safety professionals, as well as city management, city and county human relations commissioners, city housing, fair, uh, housing board members, and others. The ongoing series is provided to be an excellent way to engage our community in a discussion regarding race, youth, family, police, community relations, diversity, and human relations. Great discussions for those of you that had the opportunity to attend, and I believe there's one more this year. Again, we're mobile and we reflect our community, so we move our meetings and our community open forums, uh, throughout the county, here at Spring Lake, down south in Hope Mills, with the county. And, uh, some of our work, of course, does have a legal element, so we involve our District Attorney's Office as well. Greater Fayetteville United is one of the founding partners, Greater Fayetteville Humanited. Uh, the commission has provided an annual briefing on its activities, and as issues arise, may require dissemination for information through this organization as well. And once again, our community partners in uniform, my former boss, General Camera, thanks a lot, boss. And I'll just finish up with, uh, what a phrase we'd like to use. This is literally the money slide. This is the value of the Human Relations Commission as an extension of our city and county government, put in real time and in real dollars.
Uh, Councilmember Chris?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, before I motion to accept that report, I just think that we need to compliment the Sergeant Major and the Colonel. We just had two very, very professional presentations. Very good. I move to accept the report, the annual report of the Fayetteville Human Relations Commission.
As, as a motion by Councilmember Chris, as a second by Councilmember Waddell, uh, via lights, uh, although, any discussion on the motion? All right, counsel, I'll look to you for your votes.
As we vote, Mr. Mayor, I, I would want to recognize Dr. Kendrick, uh, who's sitting in the back, a former Fayetteville City Council member and, uh,
Councilmember, uh, Dawkins, we got, we have a motion on the floor, sir. But, but, I got you, we were gonna make sure we do that. Uh, Madam Clerk, that is unanimous? All right. Now, uh, yes, so we certainly like to recognize, uh, former councilmember Kendrick. Welcome, sir. Thank you for joining us. Counsel, we'll move to, uh, to the public forum, item eight point zero. Uh, before we do that, let's take a few minutes recess, uh, because I know we've got probably twelve speakers, so we'll, we'll come back in ten minutes. We'll move to item eight point zeros, the public forum. This is a time that any Fayetteville resident may have input and a voice on what goes on in their city. Due to policy restrictions, the forum will not last any longer than 30 minutes and each speaker will be limited to only three minutes to address the city council on issues related to the city of Fayetteville. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you are here to speak on items that may be on tonight's agenda under public hearing, we ask that you please reserve those comments, uh, until that public hearing. So when your name is called by the city clerk, we ask that you come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and home address for the record. Then when you see the light located on the podium change from green to yellow, means you have 30 seconds to speak. When you see the red light come on, that means your time has expired. Again, due to policy restrictions, we are not able to extend the given time. With that being said, Madam Clerk, I ask you to call your first speaker.
Mayor, we have 10 speakers signed up for this evening. Our first speaker is Ms. Marsha Jones.
And, uh, did have something as she makes her way to the podium. I'll go to council member here for an update on something that may be relevant to some who are speaking tonight.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, uh, council and citizens of Fayetteville. Uh, during our last public forum, we had an item that came up concerning, uh, Enterprise Avenue and changing the bus stop location back to the previous bus stop. And was informed tonight, uh, all of councils, some of councils probably just hearing about this for the first time, that that will go into full effect starting tomorrow and just wanted to give an update to the community.
My mother thanks you, my father thank you, and I thank you. I do appreciate it. I'm Marsha Jones, 3095 Enterprise Avenue. I was the one that was complaining about that situation and I do appreciate it. Thank you. I'll be glad to see it come up when tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Okay, I got one other issue that I want to talk about since I got the floor. I'm gonna take advantage of this opportunity while I got it. Um...
Can you put the mic?
Okay. I got one other thing that I wanted to talk about while I had the time. And that was the, um, fast and the fast track buses. We have a problem. These buses are falling apart. They're falling apart. You have my petitions of people that I've gotten information from as to why they're falling apart and how they're falling apart. We had July 18th, we had a situation where five of them in one day went down. I was out of town last week and they told me five went down again. This can't work. This all American city. That, you know, it's a public service to have transportation and we do appreciate it, but we gotta do better. They running one bus all day long. So if you have, uh, uh, routes, if you have 10 or 15 routes and you running this, you know, the buses all day long. We need some more buses so that we can at least run them in the morning and run them in the evening. That's the only solution that I've seen so far that we can get something to work with us. Because we're looking at some serious accidents and body counts here. And it's not getting ready to be pretty and we need to do something about it. I mean, I ride the bus. I'm a bus rider, you know, and I'm on the transit committee. Y'all know that. So I'm, I'm trying to cover up the bases. But it can't keep going where we don't have enough buses to back up the buses when they fall down. People are getting off their routes. They don't have any place anywhere to go. Don't have a bus to take them or keep them going. What are we gonna do? Is management getting ready to come down and roll the sleeves up and carry them where they gotta go? So that this isn't inconvenient situation? If you listen to the radio every day, y'all know a bus breaks down. Solution? Let's get some more buses. Okay, I mean, don't have to be new. Well, it'd be nice, but you know, but we need more. We don't have enough to complete the situation. Um, I know that I've, I've been talking to Mr. Hume and he tells me that's a pipe dream. But public service is not a pipe dream. Public service is you giving back. And it's time for y'all to give back. You know, you got the nice, pretty baseball field. You making money off of it. Let's get back to the city. That's all I'm saying. We need some buses. Thank you.
Mr. Nero B. Coleman.
Good evening. My name is Nero B. Coleman. My address is 352-5 Bubble Creek Court, Fayetteville, North Carolina, 28311. Uh, most of you guys know me and those who don't know me, again, my name is Nero B. Coleman. My friends call me Crazy Horse. My issue this evening is twofold. Uh, one is the, uh, museum. Um, we supposedly have 17 point some million dollars plus or so for a museum to, uh, honor the traitors, uh, treason. But we can't find money to build us a homeless shelter for our homeless here in the city. I feel it's a disgrace that we are sitting here, uh, like tonight, you voted that my voice would not be heard. It's whether or not you're gonna allocate the land for, or any land around where they're gonna put a so-called museum. So you can start building the foundational fund for this and that. Whereas you're not doing anything for the homeless. You're not doing, we don't have a homeless shelter anywhere in this, in the city or in this county. And, uh, I'm going to the county commissioners with this too because, uh, it's a dual thing that we got going on. You know, I helped work to get some of you guys elected, but then you stand here and you, you really hurt me by just wanting to build a museum that's gonna be an icon to the racism that's already building in this country. And then we're gonna be Fayetteville is gonna be the Charlottesville for all of the racism. Cause they're gonna have all the people come and see Sam, Silent Sam hiding in the, up on the, uh, Haymont Hill right next to, uh, the great Martin Luther King Boulevard. What kind of disgrace are we all to see? We're all American city, but Confederacy had nothing to do with Americans. They were Americans who decided to go against the United States and fight to keep people like me in slavery. And then I'm supposed to sit around here and think that you're doing something good with a civil war museum? Let's get real here. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm known for throwing the KKK Grand Dragon of North Carolina off the campus of Fayetteville State while I was president of student government, cause I couldn't see the rationale of him even coming on the campus. I can't see the rationale of this all American city building a museum to traitors when you can't take care of your homeless. I mean, I mean, it doesn't make sense for us to say that we shouldn't have a public forum on whether or not the land that I'm speaking of has already been voted on to go ahead and build a museum. Even though we're not, we're not talking about building a museum, we're just talking about offices. One thing leads to another. The language that was taking place prior to the civil war is some of the same language that's taking place in America today spewed by our great leader, Trump. We gotta do better than this. I'm gonna be waiting, working to see how this thing works out. And believe me, I'm gonna get people to register to vote. We gonna make some changes. Thank you. I was supposed to say honorable.
Pardon me.
With the name of God, I greet you in greetings and God's peace be upon you. This is one of my former city council members. I had to play with him a little bit there. He used to be back to where you are now. I am Iman Iranami Mohammed, Vietnam vet, founder of the Fayetteville Muslim Community in 1970 with four Fayetteville State University Bronco students. Maurice X. Carter. Iranami Smith Mohammed. And Lester McKinnon, Sabir. We are your founders. Beyond that, there are no founders. There are just participants. You can reach me 2700 Murkison Road. And also I want you to be aware, we are so thankful and grateful for the good news. We bring you good news. That's one of the reasons they love me so much. I'm gonna find some good news. If you are believing God, you're gonna find some good news. That's the difference between a hypocrite and a believer. The believer finds good news. The baseball stadium that God helped me get built with help from my legislative black caucus, Dan Blue and others. It's fantastic. It's wonderful. They come from all over the country. They love it. They wanna stay in Fayetteville. Now, we have tremendous growth and development. We are the second Pentagon in the United States of America. All that coffee bag, that's not gonna stop me. I'm good at this. We are the second Pentagon in America. We have more generals and officers in Fayetteville County than any other place in the whole United States except Washington DC. Pentagon. That's who Fayetteville is. We have brought $5 billion to the economy here in the last five years with help from President Barack Obama and my legislative black caucus, my team. Fort Bragg is growing like crazy. When 911 is dialed, Fort Bragg answered the phone. So let's have the growth and the love and the working together. We working together. Nothing can stop this. God is the one who's breaking this chain that you see me involved in. But I wanna thank those who support me tremendously. 700 new apartments on Wilmington Road already built. Transportation hub, I asked the legislature to build that just like the one in Durham. Go to Durham, you see the same transportation hub. Want you to know that Charlotte, Greensboro, Winston-Salem, they don't even come close to Fayetteville's transportation hub. It's a disgrace what they have compared to us. We have tremendous people here. You got the triple knickers, the Buffalo soldiers live in my neighborhood. You have heroes all over the place. So teach the children not just about Babe Ruth, but Jackie Robinson. God's peace be upon you. Yes, Hodge is over and we're celebrating Hodge all over the world. Saudi Arabia is already here. Alaykum alaikum.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Terry Thomas.
Good evening. I'm Terry Thomas. I reside at 508 Spalding Street here in Fayetteville. Um, DJ here is my councilman. Um, again, my name is Terry Thomas and I'm the executive director of the Vision Resource Center, otherwise known as the VRC. And I've been executive director for nine years. Why is that important? Um, the work session was awesome. We were unable to speak at that work session other than when spoken to. But I wanna give you a little background on some of the things that you guys talked about during that work session. Why did we move? That's been the biggest thing. Why did we move all the way out to the county? We thank the city. We've been at the city, I know, over 11 years and I've been there for nine years at the Dorothy Gilmore Recreation Center. I think, uh, city attorney Karen McDonald and Dr. Telly have been the main city representatives that have seen where we were in the Dorothy Gilmore Recreation Center. Dorothy Gilmore Center was good to us. However, as people grow, we started with 50 people when I started and now we're at 250. So at 199 square feet, it was no longer, um, adequate for our growth. Not only to mention as a nonprofit, as a small nonprofit competing with dollars here in Fayetteville and Cumberland County, you wanna look a little professional. So I don't know. I know the city attorney Karen McDonald has seen it and Dr. Telly. Um, not necessarily the most professional work environment, but we did good work. We did what we had to do to make it rise. So right now there's 676 blind and visually impaired individuals here in the county and we're only skimming the surface. So for us to have a new, um, place, that's gonna allow us to do so much more. I did come to the city. I came to the city first and foremost to be able to help us with our needs. But we had a funder out of Durham, North Carolina, that gave us, uh, a, a ticket that we could not refuse, but we had to have a building. So unfortunately, Dr. Telly couldn't work fa- fast enough, so I had to then reach out to the county. At the time that I reached out to the county, they came up with this new facility, but at the time, we know we needed transportation. I was told that I was gonna have the transportation, but things happened and that's why we are here. I've tried to do as much as I could before I came to you guys to be able to get the transportation. If we could even take our members to go up to the Freedom Grocery Store where the three quarter of a mile is and drop them off, get them dropped off there and pick them up, that's what we were gonna do. However, then safety became an issue because my members are telling me sometimes fast track is on time and sometimes it's not. So for them to stand up, they're blind and visually impaired, that would be a sa- a safety hazard for us. So that's why we moved. And as a result of moving, we were able to get that grant from LCI in Durham so that everything that I've thought of for nine years ago, that we're finally being able to help 0 to 13 blind and visually impaired kids. We're able to provide independent living skills, but they'll tell you all about that. But the precedence, if you close your eyes for five minutes, if you dare to do it, if someone asks you why you did it, tell them to close their eyes too, to see if you can do any of the things that you think you could ever do in life. That's been taken from each and every one of them. If you could just close your eyes and imagine that, that's why it's critically important. And when you meet with the county, try to get them to do that 8%. If they do, all they do right now is shopping and medical appointments. They do not do any socialization at all. And that's the main thing that we need for our people. And I just want you to know, I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. And Madam Clerk, before you, as you, before you call your next, uh, client, I'll just let it, let, uh, the general public know. We, we do have a, uh, city-county liaison meeting on Thursday. This is one of the topics that we will, uh, be discussing so far with the county, so we'll keep you posted.
Mr. Thomas Bass.
Good evening, sir. Well, good evening. I'm totally blind. My name is Thomas Bass. I live at 1015 Sandalwood Drive. And all of the supporters here is to support the Vision Resource Center. Could you please stand? Again, I'd like to thank all the city councilmen, um, for here, letting me speak. And I wanna address my situation to Mr. Dawkins. I live in your district. I'm totally blind. I attend Fayetteville State University. Uh, currently come graduate in the spring and I hope to be the first, um, social worker for the Vision Resource Center. And I can provide service for all city folks with disabilities to enhance their quality of life and to get their reinforcement into the community. And I know that you are a veteran yourself, sir. We have a lot of veterans who attend the center, who can u- utilize this service to come out and be, um, very supportive emotionally, cause a lot of them suffer from depression. I hear the frustration. I understand the frustration. So that's, I'm hoping that y'all will help us out on this situation. And revenue, it'll bring some revenue in for the ADA transportation transit. If y'all do allow the city to grant us that three, four quarter mile to have, uh, have our people to be able to come to the Vision Resource Center. Thank you. Love is blind.
Mr. Mayor, city council members. I'm here to represent my Vision Resource Center. And I'm here to ask council member Dawkins, to please take time to think about us as we try to get this situation resolved. And all other council members, please take time to do this. All we requesting is for the city to give us that transportation that we need. And we could use it. My name is Jerry Smith and I live at 2009 Lion Coward Drive. And I'm also a veteran, retired sergeant first class. And I'm asking, I'm asking all those who are veterans in the city councils to please look out for us. Cause we need, we need the, all the help that we can get. Please help us to do what, what we have to do. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. My name is Gail Iraqi. I live at 4707 North Gale Circle here in Fayetteville. And yes, my problem is about transportation to the Vision Resource Center. The center is a place for us to socialize, to learn about dealing with our blindness. And if you haven't been blind or you lose your sight or, like, like Terry said, close your eyes for five minutes and try and do something. Um, it's difficult for us to get around. But disappointing to me is that there's no transportation to the place. Um, the, the fast and the fast track will go just so far. And I think it's like almost three quarter, about a half a mile walk for us to go from there to the center. Fort Bragg is growing like crazy. When nine one one is dial, Fort Bragg answered the phone. So let's have the growth and the love and the working together. We're working together. Nothing can stop this. God is the one who's breaking this chain that you see me involved in. But I wanna thank those who support me tremendously. Seven hundred new apartments on Wilmington Road already built. Transportation hub, I asked the legislature to build that just like the one in Durham. Go to Durham, you see the same transportation hub. Want you to know that Charlotte, Greensboro, Winston-Salem, they don't even come close to Fayetteville's transportation hub. It's a disgrace what they have compared to us. We have tremendous people here. You got the triple knickers, the Buffalo soldiers live in my neighborhood. You have heroes all over the place. So teach the children not just about Babe Ruth, but Jackie Robinson. God's peace be upon you. Yes, Hodge is over and we're celebrating Hodge all over the world. Saudi Arabia is already here. Al salam aleikum.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Terry Thomas?
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Terry Thomas. I reside at five oh eight Spalding Street here in Fayetteville. Um DJ here is my councilman. Um again, my name is Terry Thomas and I'm an executive director of the Vision Resource Center, otherwise known as the VRC. And I've been executive director for nine years. Why is that important? Um the work session was awesome. We were unable to speak at that work session other than when spoken to. But I wanna give you a little background on some of the things that you guys talked about during that work session. Why did we move? That's been the biggest thing. Why did we move all the way out to the county? We thank the city. We've been at the city, I know, over eleven years and I've been there for nine years at the Dorothy Gilmore Recreation Center. I think uh city attorney Karen McDonald and Dr. Telly have been the main um city representatives that have seen where we were in the Dorothy Gilmore Recreation Center. Dorothy Gilmore Center was good to us. However, as people grow, we started with fifty people when I started and now we're at two hundred and fifty. So a hundred and ninety-nine square feet, it was no longer um adequate for our growth. Not only to mention as a nonprofit, as a small nonprofit competing with dollars here in Fayetteville and Cumberland County, you wanna look a little professional. So I don't know, I know the city attorney Karen McDonald has seen it and Dr. Telly, um not necessarily the most professional work environment, but we did good work. We did what we had to do to make it rise. So right now there's six hundred and seventy-six blind and visually impaired individuals here in the county and we're only skimming the surface. So for us to have a new um place, that's gonna allow us to do so much more. I did come to the city. I came to the city first and foremost to be able to help us with our needs. But we had a funder out of Durham, North Carolina that gave us a a a ticket that we could not refuse, but we had to have a building. So unfortunately, Dr. Telly couldn't work fa- fast enough, so I had to then reach out to the county. At the time that I reached out to the county, they came up with this new facility, but at the time we know we needed transportation. I was told that I was gonna have the transportation, but things happened and that's why we are here. I've tried to do as much as I could before I came to you guys to be able to get the transportation. If we could even take our members to go up to the Freedom Grocery Store where the three quarter of a mile is and drop them off, get them dropped off there and pick them up, that's what we were gonna do. However, then safety became an issue because my members are telling me sometimes Fast Track is on time and sometimes it's not. So for them to stand up, they're blind and visually impaired, that would be a sa- a safety hazard for us. So that's why we moved. And as a result of moving, we were able to get that grant from LCI in Durham so that everything that I've thought of for nine years ago, that we're finally being able to help zero to thirteen blind and visually impaired kids. We're able to provide independent living skills, but they'll tell you all about that. For the precedence, if you close your eyes for five minutes, if you dare to do it, if someone asks you why you did it, tell them to close their eyes too to see if you can do any of the things that you think you could ever do in life. That's been taken from each and every one of them. If you could just close your eyes and imagine that, that's why it's critically important. And when you meet with the county, try to get them to do that eight percent. If they do sho- all they do right now is shopping and medical appointments, they do not do any socialization at all. And that's the main thing that we need for our people. And I just want you to know, I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Mr. Thomas Bass?
And Madam Clerk, before you, as you, before you call your next uh client, I'll just let it, let uh the general public know, we, we do have a uh city-county liaison meeting on Thursday. This is one of the topics that we will uh be discussing so far with the county, so we'll keep you posted.
Mr. Thomas Bass?
Good evening, sir.
Well, good evening. I'm totally blind. My name is Thomas Bass. I live at ten fifteen Sandalwood Drive. And all the supporters here is to support the Vision Resource Center. Could you please stand? Wow. Again, I'd like to thank all the city councilmen um for here, letting me speak. And I wanna address my situation to Mr. Dawkins. I live in your district. I'm totally blind, attending Fayette State University, uh currently um graduate in the spring and I hope to be the first su- um social worker for the Vision Resource Center. And I can provide service for all city folks with disabilities to enhance their quality of life and to get their reenforce into the community. And I know that you are a veteran yourself, sir. We have a lot of veterans who attend the center, who can u- utilize this service to come out and be um very supportive emotionally, because a lot of them suffer from depression. I hear the frustration, I understand the frustration. So that's, I'm hoping that y'all will help us out on this situation. And revenue, it'll bring some revenue in for the ADA transportation transit if y'all do allow the city to grant us that three, four quarter mile to have uh si- have our people to be able to come to the Vision Resource Center. Thank you, I'm totally blind.
Mr. Jerry Smith?
Mr. Mayor, city council members, I'm here to represent my Vision Resource Center. And I'm here to ask council member Dawkins to please take time to think about us as we try to get this situation resolved. And all other council members, please take time to do this. All we requesting is for the city to give us that transportation that we need and we could use it. My name is Jerry Smith and I live at twenty oh nine Lion Coward Drive. And I'm also a veteran, retired sergeant first class. And I'm asking, I'm asking all those who are veterans in the city councils to please look out for us 'cause we need, we need the, all the help that we can get. Please help us to do what, what we have to do. Thank you.
Ms. Gail Araki?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gail Araki. I live at four seven zero seven North Gale Circle here in Fayetteville. And yes, my problem is about transportation to the Vision Resource Center. The center is a place for us to socialize, to learn about dealing with our blindness. And if you haven't been blind or you lose your sight or, like, like Terry said, close your eyes for five minutes and try and do something. Um it's difficult for us to get around. But disappointing to me is that there's no transportation to the place. Um the, the fast and the Fast Track will go just so far. And I think it's like almost three quarter, about a half a mile walk for us to go from there to the center. Now, when we're visually impaired, we don't know what we're seeing. We don't know what we're missing. And it's a, it's a safety hazard for us to go walking that far. And a lot of us are elderly and with walkers, we can't walk that far. We do need the transportation. So I hope something gets done, somebody, you know, where we need, where we get the transportation so that we can be more open to others in Fayetteville that are blind and visually impaired. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Sherri Young?
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name is Sherri Young. I live at eight forty-six Stony Kirk Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina, two eight three one four. Both my daughter and I are both visually impaired and have been patrons of the center for quite some time now. We're asking that y'all consider us for the transportation. It's such a necessity for our patrons. A lot of us have mobility restrictions. A lot of us can't even get to the center even with our own transportation because of walkers, wheelchairs, things like that are not accessible with our vans that we do have. So we need all the help we can get getting transportation to this new center. We're grateful for the center that we do have. It's a wonderful facility. But how are we to enjoy and to get out socially if we're not even given the opportunity to get there? It's so imperative as we're growing more and more each and every day that we get to the facility, we get there, we socialize, we build confidence with each other. We also build family. We are each other's family, as I'm from out of state. And now living here in Fayetteville, I'm very proud to be here. But with the city council, we need, we need all the help we can get. Fast Track is our, it's necessity for us to maintain our independence. I teach also with the visually impaired. And I give back to my community, I give back to my patrons as well by teaching. How can I get there? How can I benefit them if I can't even get there? So I'm asking you, please, Johnny Dawkins, you're my city council member, please, help us get the transportation we so desperately need. Thank you so much.
Mr. Quincy Lampford?
All right. Hello, uh Mr. Mayor, city council uh members. My name is uh Quince Lampford. It's my wife, Sandra Lampford. Uh we uh reside at seven fourteen uh Emerald Drive, um US Army retired. But um I lost my sight back in two thousand and seven and I knew about the V, V, VRC, but I didn't actually start using them until two thousand and twelve. Um sitting in the house, you know, if y'all close your eyes, close your eyes for about five seconds, okay? Then you open your eyes. But if you had to walk to the bathroom in here with your eyes closed, I'm pretty sure most of you couldn't do it. So just imagine us getting off the bus stop and had to walk a half a mile trying to find the center. Okay? When you open your eyes, you can see. When you close your eyes, that's what I see, nothing. I'm totally blind, okay? I never would imagine in my life that I would've been blind. Some of you sitting in here, even on the board, I hate to tell you, and I'm not wishing it on you, but with the stats, one day one of you may be blind or visually impaired or one of your loved ones or your friends. And the same VRC that we talking about right now, one day they may have to utilize that same service. For me, I said to myself, I can't sit in this house for the rest of my life. I need to be able to get out. The VRC was my stepping stone to get out and my highway to independence. Socialization is very important for us, the visually impaired people. When you have a short time, short-term disability, people come and see you. But if you have a long-term disability, over a period of time, your so-called friends, family members, and people are gonna shun you or you find yourself isolated. So thanks to the VRC, they're the ones that helped me through my rehabilitation progress to be the independent person that I am today. We're the all-American city. Charlotte, I understand is within ranks number uh one of the top five as far as being blind-friendly. If we're the all-American city, we need to become just like Charlotte. We're not gonna go away. And I just ask you to uh do the right thing and to uh give us that extra half a mile so that we can uh have a place to go to edu- get more education and fellowship. Thank you.
Mr. Willie Edwards?
Good evening, city council mayor. I'm Willie Edwards. I provide at six oh five Hilliard Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina. And I've been a long resident here. I graduated from Reed Ross High School back in seventy-eight, the class of seventy-eight. And I'm very, very active in the neighborhood. And I realize that we do have a homeless problem. I travel around the city every day. I see them at the food line and I, I, I see them out near the mall. I see them all over the city of Fayetteville. But ladies and gentlemen, mayor, city councilmen, we cannot just throw them away. We have buildings around here with nothing in them. If we can build a multi-billion dollar baseball stadium that brings in revenue, we can help our own because you just keep pushing them out. You go in the woods around Walmart. Our church go out there and serve them. They all out there in the woods behind Walmart, down under the bridge. When they had the flood down at the Cape Fear River, our church let some of them stay in the church to have somewhere to go. Our church did that. And I even talked to a club owner, see, it's easy on a Saturday night to go to a club, but then when something tragic happens, that club owner don't let you come in there and sleep on this floor. See, you pay your ten dollars to go in there and dance on Friday or Saturday night, but you go ask that club owner, hey, I need when the flood. They gonna tell you, no, everybody run to the churches. And then they get mad at the churches sometimes when the church tell them no. Now, come on, we, we, we are American city. We are, and I've been living here all my life. And I've seen some great things happen around here. Downtown is looking beautiful, I mean, looking marvelous. Yes, we do have homeless at the bus stops. If you go down there right now, you'll probably see some laying somewhere in the bus stops. And see, that could be us, we might be one paycheck away from being there. We looking good today. Oh, y'all sitting up there looking, y'all good and y'all bought the five hundred suits. But who say y'all gonna have that tomorrow? Who say y'all gonna have it tomorrow? We don't know what tomorrow gonna bring. We don't. So let's treat people how we wanna be treated. Decency and respect. A lot of them wanna be out there. And then some of them is just by circumstances. We talk to a lot, I hear you, I hear you Bill. We, we talk to a lot of them by circumstances. We do, a lot of them out there by circumstances. And I'm asking you, let's, let's do better concerning the homeless, we can. I thank y'all, God bless you.
May we have no further speakers?
All right, we would like to thank each of you for uh your, your powerful comments tonight and uh I'm sure the city council is very attentive to everything you said. Uh can assure you that, uh Councilman Dawkins, did you have something to say?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll make as quick as I can. Um thank all of you for being here. The situation is thirty-five thousand dollars. If the county files with the feds, they can get twenty-eight thousand dollars or eighty percent.
Councilman Dawkins?
I wanted to thank specifically Mr. Thomas Bass. Um my uncle uh was Thomas Bass, so I can assure you, I will never forget your name. Uh Jerry Smith was one of my favorite wide receivers. I will not forget your name. Sherri Young, thank you uh for coming forward. I wanna thank all of you for being here. So, Mr. Mayor, do I not need to ex-
No, that's, that's, it's just a problem.
We look forward to helping some way.
Okay, thank you. All right. Yeah, so uh we'll, we'll give a few minutes for you all. If you, we'd certainly welcome you to stay, but if you wanna transition out, we'll give a few minutes for that. Yeah. That's, that's what it is. All right, council, we'll move to uh item nine point zero one, uh public hearing. And individuals desiring to speak at the public hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before seven PM this evening. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue at the public hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each unless by previous arrangement designate a single spokesperson. And they may use the entire fifteen minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and address for the record. You may then address the city council. When the light changes from green to amber, means you have thirty seconds remaining. At the end of your allotted time, the timer will ring. And at this time, I'll call Mr. Freeman? Oh, yes, ma'am. Staff member will come forward who will be presenting.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Terry Lynn Hale and I'm senior planner for the city of Fayetteville. All right, where are we?
This is, yeah, this, this is nine point oh one.
Oh, no, that's-
We haven't done oh one yet.
Right. She's there for nine oh two, but we need to do nine oh one.
Right, yeah, that's my point.
Okay.
All right, we'll, we'll see you in just a minute. Nine point zero one, is there a uh presenter for that or is this just a uh? Ms. Charleston, I guess you'll.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Uh my name is Jonathan Charleston, two oh one Hay Street, uh Fayetteville, North Carolina. I'm here on behalf of the Capital Encore Academy and we do have the board chair here tonight that's gonna speak as well. Uh you may recall that there was a request made by the Capital Encore Academy, which is a school, a uh charter school here on, on, in downtown Fayetteville, that has requested uh the authorization for the Public Finance Authority, which is the Wisconsin Bond Issuing Commission created under Wisconsin law. Uh they are interested in providing and not to exceed seven million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to provide financing for the purchase of the old Capitol Building, the renovations to the building adjacent to it. Uh and that we're asking the city uh to conduct a TFR hearing for purposes of giving the public the opportunity to comment. In this case, the Capital Encore Academy has requested that the Public Finance Authority of uh Wisconsin issue bonds to provide financing for certain costs and, and associated with the acquisition, construction, reconstruction, installation, and equipping of the purpose of the, uh for the purchase of the educational building uh on Hay Street, the Capitol Building located at one twenty-six Hay Street. And the lease renovation improvement and equipping of an approximately eleven thousand, one hundred and twenty square foot building, which is attached to the existing building, the existing Capitol Building, which will consist of nine classrooms and office space and four bed uh bathrooms. Uh this is located at one thirty-two and one thirty-four Hay Street. Uh as we discussed earlier during your dinner meeting, uh the purpose of this meeting is because as a precondition for the exclusion of the gross income uh from the uh, of the interest on the bonds, these bonds are tax exempt. So the tax code says that in order for the gross income uh of, to be excluded from tax, that we have to have this public hearing. This is just a formality. Keep in mind that the city will not have any financial responsibility whatsoever for repayment of these bonds. I remind you that this city council has uh conducted a similar TFR hearing in connection with the financing for the uh renovation and upfitting of the Old Grove View Terrace, which is now about to be Cross Creek Point. You did a similar thing for the Hope Six uh down on Wilmington Road. Uh you've done some other TFR hearings in the past. And so the key point that I would make for the council tonight is that the city, again, will have no liability whatsoever for the repayment of principal or interest on the bonds. And the full faith and credit nor the taxing power of the city will be pledged to support the bonds. This is a formality that's required because of the tax code to give the public a chance to comment. Now, what we'll be asking you to do at the conclusion of the public hearing is to adopt uh the resolution that I believe the clerk has uh attached to your agenda, which in indicates that the TFR hearing was conducted and that the bonds are authorized in accordance with applicable law. Again, uh no liability whatsoever to the city, but this uh gives an opportunity for the uh Capital Encore Academy to acquire its building, to acquire the adjacent building uh through a lease, to do all the necessary renovations and upfitting uh to can, continue the educational program that uh exists downtown Fayetteville uh on Hay Street. I'll pause and uh answer any questions that council might have.
All right. See no questions at this time? Thank you, Mr. Charleston. So at this time, we will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
May we just have one speaker, Mr. Jeremy Fe- Feigbig?
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Uh good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Jeremy Feigbig, address fifty-four hundred Ramsey Street here in Fayetteville. Um I'm the president of the Board of Directors of Capital Encore Academy and just here to speak in support of uh this resolution. Five years ago, Capital Encore Academy was empty. Uh it was a big old uh empty spot in the middle of downtown Fayetteville. And we stepped in uh with a school that is growing, uh that, that has academic success and that has become a great citizen um of downtown Fayetteville. And so we're uh as a board looking to um facilitate that growth uh and to prepare for the future and certainly the success of our students with this resolution. Happy to answer any questions.
Uh yes, sir, I did have uh do we, do we, we entertain the questions after we close this or?
I believe so.
Yeah.
We don't have any further speakers.
Okay, so I'll, I'll close it and then we'll come to you for questions, sir. This time, we'll, we'll close the public hearing. Councilman Dawkins, did you have a question?
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh Mr. Charleston? So now, um you said you're buying this, in effect, the old Capitol Building, correct?
That's correct.
And then who holds the um, the mortgage on that building or who, who's the owner of that building now? Is it a bank in Virginia?
No, the, the, the building is owned by a, an entity that's local to North Carolina now and now, and, uh, the Capital Encore Academy, uh, real estate entity will acquire that building. It will be financed, uh, by the Public Finance Authority, which is a special entity organized under Wisconsin law, the purpose of which is to issue bonds for charter schools and similar activities around the country. In fact, this is not the first deal like this that was done by the Public Finance Authority in North Carolina. There was one that was completed in High Point as well, a similar, uh, charter school project financed the same way that this one is being financed.
The reason I ask that, Mr. Charleston, is that particular building was one of our four projects in oh-three to oh-five, and, uh, the city, uh, loaned seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which was not paid back to the city. Um, so I was wondering, um, and I know that fellow filed bankruptcy and dissolved the, the corporation, so I was concerned about, uh, an old debt owed back to the city, and, um, interested in, and this may be a question for the city attorney, if, if there was any lien that we had established on that particular property that would be, uh, still, uh, in effect, or no, the lien is gone, we've lost our seven hundred and fifty thousand?
That is correct.
That is correct, okay. You mentioned there's a building beside this, the Capitol Building, so?
That's correct.
So, and this same entity owns both of those buildings that you're, or is there separate?
Yeah, let me, let me be clear. First off, I wanna just state so everybody's clear that the, uh, Capital Encore Academy, uh, uh, leases the building as it stands now. The folks that it leases the building for acquired that building, uh, from the bank. The bank had, in fact, foreclosed, which cut off all liens, judgments, and things of that nature. So, uh, the building is owned free and clear according to, according to applicable law, and, uh, the Capital Encore Academy right now is a tenant in the Capitol Building.
Got you.
Now, the, uh, so they're gonna acquire that building, and they're doing upfits, renovations, uh, investing approximately seven point seven five million dollars in downtown Fayetteville. The building, uh, next door is, uh, is not owned by the Capital Encore Academy, nor will it be acquired.
So it's gonna be leased?
But it's gonna be leased, and the improvements will be, the leasehold improvements pursuant to a long-term lease. The Public Finance Authority, uh, in Wisconsin, of course, will have a mortgage on that property because it, essentially the way it works, the, uh, this is a privately placed, uh, offering, uh, the bonds will be sold probably to an institutional investor. The proceeds of that bond will then be loaned to the borrower, would, who would then use the proceeds?
Tax-free.
Tax-free.
Great.
Uh, the proceeds of which will be used to do the upfits, uh, and renovations, uh, to prepare that building. And by the way, the work is underway. I think, uh, many of you have seen the work downtown that they're doing.
And last question, approximately how many jobs are, are, how many folks are employed by Capital Encore and the leased building? What kind of impact with jobs? Is it eighty or ninety?
I heard one gentleman say in, uh, Washington, this is gonna be huge, but I'm gonna have the chairman of the board come up and speak to that.
We have a staff of around fifty. Uh, we're still hiring teachers right now. Uh, that does not include the impact, of course, of construction workers and things like that, um, but our, our staff is around fifty, and, um, part of our expansion into the Pittman Building next door is, uh, is, uh, growth. I mean, we're just expanding.
Great, no, I'm, I'm very supportive, but I just wanted to make sure the public understood that we made a decision as a council fourteen years ago, and I voted against it, and we lost that money, but now we have an opportunity to possibly make some of that money back and get it back on the tax rolls producing income for the city. So, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Councilman Arp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we can stop all the, uh, diatribe, let's go ahead and, and move that the, we, uh, we authorize the, the issuance of the revenue bonds by the Public Finance Authority relating to Capital, uh, Encore Academy LLC as proposed, except the public hearing.
There's, there's a motion by, uh, Councilman Arp, there's a second by Councilmember Jensen. Any, any further discussion on this issue? All right, council, I'll look to you for votes. And, uh, was action needed, Mr. Charleston, uh, other than hosting the public hearing? We, we're not, the city was not taking any formal action on this, right?
There's, there's a resolution we've asked the city.
So it's a resolution, okay, that we held it and those kinds of things?
Right.
That was in the packet, okay.
That's in the packet.
All right, council, let's redo that. We voted on the resolution, so just clarify that in your motion for Mr. Arp.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, that the, we, the, the council authorized the staff to set up a, schedule a public hearing on authorizing the issuance of the revenue bonds by the Public Finance Authority relating to Capital Encore Academy LLC, and the subsequent resolution stating that we had the public hearing.
All right, and, and that was seconded by Councilmember Jensen, correct? All right, any discussion? All right, council, I'll look to you.
I have a question. I, I need, I need clarification. So is this vote just to say that we had a public hearing?
Yes, ma'am, that's what the resolution.
Yes, ma'am, just, just for clarity, the city has no financial liability, we has no input put on our credit or, uh, financial or bond ratings, uh, it, it has no financial linkage at all to the city, it's just under T E F R A, I think I said that right, T E F R A, that they have to have a elected body hold a public hearing to meet the criteria for them to apply for a public bond, and we're just as a courtesy providing that forum for them.
I have a question about that. Do I need to push my question?
Yeah, you've got it.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. Why were we the elected body that was selected for this particular? How did we get to, how did we draw the, the, this straw?
Well, I think that the request came because we're actually the jurisdiction where the project is, uh, and so I think there had been some precedent with the housing authority, uh, with other properties, even though we were not the borrower or the agent to that. Um, so, Mr. Charleston, would you like to explain that in any detail? I think that was what was discussed earlier.
Uh, yes, uh, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Waddell, because of the prior experience that, that we've had with the city council, um, uh, holding T E F R A hearings, I felt that the city council was knowledgeable about the process, but the statute clearly says that the, uh, the elected body in the jurisdiction, uh, can hold the, uh, the hearing. And so that's the United States, uh, Internal Revenue Code that provides for that. And, uh, so we brought it, you know, to, to the, the manager and asked the manager to put it before council, see if the council would consider that. But again, I think the, the, the big thing, I know you guys have had a, a long meeting tonight, but the big thing is to remember that the only thing that the, uh, the city council is doing tonight is holding a public hearing to give voters or other interested people an opportunity to be heard on it, and, uh, in fact, there was a notice published in the newspaper, all in accordance with the statute, and so the city assumes absolutely no responsibility whatsoever, but the city has the opportunity to facilitate seven point seven five million dollars in investment in downtown. And so, uh, you know, with all the other stuff that the city is doing downtown, including inducing bonds for the baseball stadium and other projects, we thought that it'd be appropriate to bring it before the council.
Thank you. You, clear, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay, all right, um, council, any other discussion? If not, I'll look to you for action. All right, madam clerk, that is nine to one. Those voting in favor of the resolution, Councilman Chris, Cullerton, Arp, Wright, Colvin, Moan, Jensen, Hare, and Dawkins, voting in opposition, Councilmember Waddell. Motion carries. Item nine point zero two was a, uh, was rerouted, request for issuance of special use permit by Dan Weeks, uh, to allow self-storage mini warehouse, and now it's your turn.
Yay, okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, this evening, I'm presenting to you case number P nineteen dash thirty-one F. It's, the applicant is Dan Weeks, and it is, the property is owned by the heirs of Joe Rayner, and the executor of the property is Robert G. Ray. We are requesting a special use permit at fifty-two thirty-four Rayford Road. It's currently undeveloped, it's approximately eight point seven three, plus or minus acres, and it is in Mr. Arp's District Nine. Um, the staff has recommended approval, and the zoning commission, uh, recommended approve, voted for approval four to zero. Here we have the aerial photo of the site, and you can see Rayford Road is on the south, and there's a stream that runs through the property, which will come into play later Currently, the property is zoned CC, community commercial, which does allow the mini warehouse with a special use permit. Our land use shows that it is also a heavy commercial area surrounded on three sides by a single-family residential. Here we have pictures of the property. As I said before, it is undeveloped, and on the right-hand side, which is the southeast corner, um, is where the stream exits, and there's also a fall, outfall that will be replaced by N C D O T at some point. On the north side, we have, uh, examples of the housing. On the west, there is a car rental dealership. To the south is a commercial business, and to the east is another car dealership. The property will have several buildings for storage, eleven in total. This is an elevation of the proposed office space. It's going to have five hundred and eighty-seven square feet, made up of a reception area, a handicap accessible bathroom, and a storage area. Because it's gonna be fronting Rayford Road, it will be made of brick, as you can see in the elevations. Here we have the site plan, um, and on the right-hand side is Rayford Road here. Uh, this is the north side. There are some very interesting, um, pieces to this. Uh, the developer is aware that there are plans to widen Rayford Road, and so this area is, um, the setback is extended a little bit to allow for that. Also, this is the outfall, uh, that will be replaced. They are gonna go from a forty-two to a sixty-inch outfall that has its plan, but it, they don't have a date of when it's gonna be done yet. Mr. Weeks has said that they have a desire to be a good neighbor, and in line with that, they have added an extra five feet to the buffer between the building at the north and the single-family residential for a twenty-foot buffer. Most of that will be trees that are existing already. Um, they're gonna maintain a seventy-five-foot buffer over this, uh, streamline and, uh, have a crossing for the road here. There'll be two gates, one right here with access, public access to the office space, and that, then this gate will access this small building here. There'll be another gate here, I believe that's right. Um, the interesting thing about this is in order to maintain the integrity of the trees, they've decided to put like a little walking trail through here, um, and a small bench for the use of the people that have, uh, storage units there. There's extra parking and, um, a dumpster. They have the required fifteen-foot buffers over here where the residential side is. They plan to use a combination of the tree buffers and architectural, um, elements to, uh, keep this within, within the U D O because it is in sightline of Rayford Road, and also they had plans to put a, um, chain link fence up to a point back here, and then use the same architectural wrought iron fence across the front on this side to the, to a point where you wouldn't be able to see the chain link from Rayford Road. They have two, uh, retention ponds, uh, there's gonna be eleven buildings, some of them will be climate-controlled, some of them will not, and the hours will be, uh, six A M. to ten P M. based on the U D O code saying that those would be the hours adjacent to residential, which is on this, um, west side and the north side. All right, zoning commission recommended approval four to zero for the special use permit. Um, it is permitted in community commercial. The twenty-ten land use plan promotes heavy commercial, um, Rayford Road is ideal for this kind of development. This site plan has been done by H and W Design, Dan Weeks is the applicant, and, uh, he is aware, aware that the special use permit does not constitute approval of the building or sign permits. Um, the exterior facades will be constructed in according, in accordance with the Unified Development Code, and, uh, Mr. Weeks has satisfied the requirements in the code for mini warehouse self-storage units. Um, the buildings will be twelve feet in height, the buffers and fencing, um, are compliant. He's going to use the type D buffers in areas that are adjacent to single-family residential. Um, he's included seventy-five foot for the stream buffer from the top of the bank and is planning to use a lot of the already existing vegetative buffers on the, on the site. Do you have any questions?
Uh, don't think so, but we'll open up the public hearing and, uh, don't go too far. All right, thank you. This time, we'll open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, you have a, any speakers?
Uh, yes, sir, we just have one speaker, Mr. Dan Weeks.
He's sworn in, right?
No, oh, yeah, yeah, it was his special use permit. Yes, sir, if you would like to raise your right hand. Okay, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to be, give is the truth to help your God?
I did.
If you can raise your right hand. Okay, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth to help your God? Thank you.
Thank you, welcome, sir.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, for the record, my name is Dan Weeks, I'm the applicant, uh, with this special use request. I will be very brief in my comments, I know it's, it's been a, it's been a long evening, um, and it's been, if I may say this, um, you know, I've, I've been doing this a long time, and it was very humbling tonight, um, to hear, um, what I heard tonight, and you're very pa, you have a very passionate community, and you're very passionate about what you do, and I just wanted to, just pressed on my heart. So, um, I think that, um, again, uh, we've met all the T R C requirements, we've been through T R C, we've had an internal staff review with, especially with E M S and fire to make sure they can get vehicles through the site. The unique thing about this site is the Blue Line Stream provides a seventy-five-foot buffer from the top of the bank. That'll be a great vegetative buffer from Rayford Road and the street to the, the vast majority of the buildings on the rear of the site. Um, I think that, uh, as, as Lynn had mentioned, is, is that we wanna keep all the existing trees along the buffers, primarily on the residential sides, so that we can, can be good neighbors. The buildings have a minimal profile. I think that, um, once we get into engineering, some things may change with regard to ponds and, and that aspect of it, and, but for the most part, I think that, um, hopefully the plan speaks for itself, and one last thing with exterior lighting, we're not proposing any exterior lighting or area lighting, all we are proposing is, is it lighting above some of the access doors to the units. So I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
All right, I don't see any. Madam Clerk, is that it?
No, we have no further speakers.
All right, that will close the public hearing. Uh, have, do have, uh, Councilman Chris, is that a question?
Yes, sir, you said you're not gonna, that's a huge f, plan there, sir, you said you're not gonna put lighting in there for security purposes, or what?
Well, the, the facility is contained by fencing and two gates, but, you know, the idea was, is that we have surrounding residential uses around us.
Yes.
And through this design process is the, the ownership group wanted to make sure that they did not impose any area lighting, um, and plus two, the hours, um, are from six A M. till ten P M. And so we just wanted to light really where the door access were, and I think that that'll be adequate lighting. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Arp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I move that the council approved the special use permit, sup in a community commercial zoning district as presented by staff based on the set, city standards, uh, development ordinance and the evidence presented during this hearing. Additionally, the application is consistent with the applicable plans because the development is located in a community commercial district and the use spec, specific standards for self-service storage, mini warehouse have been met, and that this use complies with the findings listed below, and four, the proposed permit is in the public interest because the proposed S U P does fit with the character of the area. If approved, this permit shall be effective ten days after council's approval, which is August twenty-six, twenty nineteen. Uh, the sup shall expire one year from its effective date if a building permit is not service delivery, parking, loading, odor, noise, glare, and vibration. Four, the special use is configured to minimize adverse effects, including visual impacts of the proposed use on adjacent lands. Five, the special use avoids significant deterioration of water and air resources, wildlife habitat, scenic resources, and other natural resources. Six, the special use maintains safe ingress and egress onto the site and safe road conditions around the site, and a supporting fact would be the widening of Rayford Road as discussed. Seven, the special use allows for protection of property values and the ability of neighboring lands to develop the uses permitted in the zoning district. And eight, the special use complies with all other relevant city, state, and federal laws and regulations.
Thank you, Councilmember Art, and we had a second by Councilmember Wright. Any further discussion on this motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Good job, good luck to you, sir. Council with that will adjourn. Y'all have a good evening.